I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, July 24th, 2025. Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held. The purpose of the executive session was to engage in informational updates presented to the Board on a number of district initiatives, as well as confidential matters pertaining to personnel, informational updates and discussion with council pertaining to tax assessment appeals and costs associated with the neighborhood improvement zone, and an informational update with council regarding negotiations with the Teamsters Union. The Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on agenda and/or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. According to our Board's policy, any person may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented in resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Board Secretary, Mr. Simonsen. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Madam Superintendent, do you have any remarks this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening to our School Board of Directors, to my team, and to members of the public, all of our families, students. Good evening, and I hope everyone is having an enjoyable and relaxing and rejuvenating summer. Before we get into our finance meeting, and I'll make all my remarks during this session, I just want to share, earlier this week, Ms. Reese and I were able to attend a national convening from the National School Board, I'm sorry, the National School Public Relations Association, where Ms. Reese was recognized amongst other leaders as the Communicator of the Year for the State of Pennsylvania, as well as she was one of the people presented as a finalist towards becoming the Communicator of the Year for the nation. So I just want, please join me in giving her a round of applause. Also, I want to add that the district was recognized, we received five awards, and the Superintendent also received an award. And I say this this way, you know, I am because of all of you. So I thank you for your hard work and commitment, and I know that I put the language arts teacher position that I still have in full effect. So I thank you for working very closely, because we were recognized nationally for our work around the strategic plan, as well as our equity work, and I'm going to say the E-word in public, and the op-ed that we presented. And actually, others are asking us for guidance as to how our process, our videos and such. So I'm really excited. It was a really great day for Allentown, for our name to come up across that screen, and people really excited and coming up to us saying, wow, Allentown is on the move. So thank you, Ms. Reese, for your hard work and commitment to everyone here on the team. Please give yourselves a round of applause. As we continue our summer programs, we want to say that we have the unique pleasure of serving this summer about nineteen hundred of our sensational, creative, talented, gifted, handsome, enthusiastic, brilliant students this summer, from kindergarten through, our students are taking some classes at institutions of higher education this summer. We're really thrilled about the continuous work of our AI Institute. We have our students working, and I want to thank Ms. Singer for stepping in and helping work with Dr. Savoy on implementing our internship program. So we have students making a whole lot of money this summer, and I wish I could make as much, could have made as much money as they are making this summer for their contributions to our internal learning community, as well as with our partners. So please, let's give everyone a round of applause for their efforts on the internship. And we want to thank our friends at the sales universities particularly, because this effort came out of an idea through my Google Fellowship that we're able to execute on, and this is year two of that effort, which also is, we've learned from this experience to help shape our New Bridgeview Academy. And so I want to thank all the leaders who were involved with that, Ms. Ramos, Ms. Bryant, Mr. Rosado, and his entire team for all those efforts. So thank you, and let's please give them a round of applause. Something that's near and dear to my heart, as it relates to overall engagement of our learning community, meaning our students, staff, students, and our broader community, we are halfway through the Superintendent's Reading League Dive into Reading Challenge. Yes! Yay! So it's our district-wide summer reading initiative that is running through, will commence through August 10th. And this is a part of our overall big picture thinking around lighting our way to literacy. So we will begin to promote the lighting the way to literacy throughout for the remainder of this new upcoming, well, for this upcoming academic year. So everyone who's under the sound of my voice, including our community leaders, you want to track your minutes in Beanstack, and also be clever for our students, and there will be prizes. So I hear for our top readers, and so on, our team will give me some people that I can visit next week, who are some of our top readers. So we want to thank you so much. Reading is still fundamental, okay? So I know we have a lot of, I'm going to read on my iPad, but a good old book is still good, okay? And it helps you to discover new ways, new possibilities, and take us in various places. So we're excited about that. A part of the lighting the way we will share with the School Board and everyone else, we're going to have some of our new talk shows, and have some of our community leaders help host those shows, and we will have various books by grade level that we are reading as a collective community. So more to come. And I have to, they told me to make sure I mentioned this, our students, as of last week, have logged one hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred minutes this summer, so please give them a round of applause. Believe it or not, in less than a month away, school begins again. Yes! So I want to highly encourage our families, or anyone who's listening, to talk to a family, a niece, nephew, cousin, brother, or child, you are entrusted, you have been entrusted with the care. If you are not registered, please register for school now, and it's particularly if you are in kindergarten. And so now, the Superintendent went out on a limb, and we are accepting students who are four years old, as we mentioned, to attend kindergarten, because I thought I was okay. And so, and I didn't realize all the other factors. But with that said, we would like for our families to register your children early so that we can best prepare for them. And particularly, our friend, Mr. Gruhlehat Nap, on our team, so he can, if you need transportation, that we can plan early, so you won't say, you know, we can't have you come the day before and say, where's my bus? So we would like for you, if you need transportation, and you know your child is four or five years old and is going to go to kindergarten, that you register no later than July 30th, because if you register after that, transportation may not be readily available for the first day of school. We will, we will get you transportation, but it might not happen then because of all the logistics. So please, everyone who has a friend, cousin, niece, nephew, everyone else, please help us to have our students registered. Early registration is crucial, and I just want to make sure I said all those great things, so thank you, Ms. Reese. Please visit our website or contact any of our schools if you have questions, you're like, what is she talking about? I really don't understand. Please contact our schools, visit our website, we will have someone contact you. Dr. Frank Kelly will also assist if you are in kindergarten, and our Assessment Office will also support you in the registration process. Okay, we know this is one time of the year that we get really excited as a community. It's our back-to-school bash. Yeah! We want to remind everyone within our community that we will have a big bash on August 13th, Wednesday, August 13th. And you know, this came out two years ago, the students who were part of my Superintendent's Advisory Council said to me, and I think Ms. Pollock and Ms. Reese may have been in the room at the time, and they said, we want to have a block party, Dr. Burks. And I always say, oh, no. And they looked at me, like, how is she going to respond to this? And so the block party turned into two consecutive years of a big bash, approximately nine thousand people, first year about eight thousand, and the next year nine thousand people. So we want to have it be twenty thousand if we could. And so please, encourage families, we're going to give out free backpacks, food. We have about seventy-five of our partners participating in this effort, and if you are so impassioned that you love children, but you don't have children, we will accept your check today. If you, anyone who's under the sound of my voice, if you're an alumni, or you're someone who just loves education, or we will, if it's five dollars, we'll take it, okay? Because we want to ensure that our students are equipped, we have food, we're going to give out all free food to everyone, we're going to have some taste testing, we will have survey, we're, people who are going to be identified as Teacher of the Year, Administrator of the Year, so you have to be here to vote for the Person of the Year at Cedar Beach Park. We're partnering with the City of Allentown and many of our other partners, and we want to thank all our generous donors who have contributed at this point, but we can never raise too much money. So, and if you want to volunteer, and if you don't know who to call, Ms. Parks will be happy to talk with you and help you out. So Ms. Parks, can you wave, I don't know if the camera can see her, but yes, she will take your money, okay? Thank you. And so that event will take place from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Cedar Beach Park. We also, there are some logistics, so around, if you can't get to the park, I think we have some transportation for some of our schools. So again, if you need, talk to the school leaders at the school in your catchment area. We want to start the year strong together. We will also have our new educator orientation, new staff, am I calling it out? New educator staff orientation that takes place on Thursday, August 14th, and Friday, August 15th, 2025. We're looking forward to welcoming, and when I say new educators, not just teachers, social workers, psychologists, anyone who is a part of the AEA. And so, so we look forward to welcoming about two hundred new people to our learning community. And so we've added various positions to enhance our theme-based offerings. We are growing grades, so those numbers are higher because we have more staff that we're hiring. So we are thrilled about that. As tonight, on our regular School Board of Directors meeting, there'll be several administrative appointments, and so we will have them recognized during that portion. We have some leaders taking on some acting roles. We are, as an organization, we are committed to continuous improvement, and we are in the midst of looking at our organization, aligning the talents and gifts of members of our learning community to support our district and school continuous improvement efforts, focused on our students. One more thing, Ms. Matheson, to work with me. So on Monday, August 18th, we will have the adult kickoff. Our convocation will take place, it will be held at the PPL Center. And so, and last year, and the year before, we had, and this will happen this year, we will all come together, the district will close our offices for a few hours, about four hours that day, so August 18th. So if you can get everything you need prior to August 18th, but between 7:30 and, say, 12:30, the offices will be closed in the district, because we are all going to launch the year together, every role in the organization. So is that me? I'm a custodian, that's you. I'm a parent, that's you. I'm clerical. Everyone, everyone, say everyone. Everyone, everyone. Everyone in the district, we will come together, we will showcase our successes, we will highlight our students, and we will talk about our progress at our strategic plan, as well as our way forward as an organization. For all the partners who are listening, we did extend invitations to you, and if you could please confirm that you are attending, just so that we can make sure there is a special place for you to sit, so you can say, I'm a special partner. So if you don't tell us, we can't make you a special partner. So again, I'm excited about the work that is underway in the district, so I want to thank again everyone, and we look forward to the next year, even though it just felt, feels like we just ended the school year. And so again, I thank you, and Ms. Matheson, I turn the microphone back to you.
Thank you. This time, do we have any comment cards on public agenda items? No? We do have five action items on the finance agenda this evening. The first three action items, Mr. Cuff is requesting approval from the Board of Directors for tax assessment settlements. Without objection from the Board, we'll take all three of those together.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. We are seeking the School Board Director to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter to an agreement for the property located at 1014 Summer Avenue in the City of Allentown, setting the assessment of the property at $738,150 for the tax year 2025, and for each subsequent tax year until a change in property assessments pursuant to applicable laws. That's motion number one. Second motion, seeking approval from the School Board of Directors to authorize Fox Rothschild LLP to enter to an agreement for the property located at 140 North Seventh Street in the City of Allentown, setting the assessment of the property at $542,640 for the tax year 2025, and for each subsequent tax year until a change in the property's assessment pursuant to applicable law. Third property, third motion, seeking approval from the School Board of Directors to authorize Fox Rothschild to enter to an agreement for the property located on West Liberty Street in the City of Allentown, setting the total assessment of the property at $798,000 even for the tax year 2025, for each subsequent year until a change in the property's assessment pursuant to applicable law. Thank you.
Is there any comment or question? Seeing none, may I have a motion to move all three items forward till later this evening?
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion carries.
Thank you.
The next action item, Dr. Wortenby is requesting approval from the School Board for Pocono Mountain Dairies to provide dairy produce for the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you, Board, thank you, Dr. Burks. This is one where I would love to enjoy, say, got milk? So what's really interesting about this, when you go out to bid for food service or any types of services, sometimes there's something called a consortium. The consortium will have multiple products. This year, they did not have milk, because the volume would be extensive. Just by way of example, we serve approximately 20,000 units of milk product a day. That's 3.6 million units of milk per year. So it's a lot. Now, think about 500 school districts going after the same vendor. So this year, we had to go after a vendor, which is Pocono Mountain Dairies, for $533,465.50. So it's a lot of milk, but it's good milk. So we're looking for the Board to approve.
Is there a comment or question, other than my laughter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to move the milk item forward?
Make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion carries. For our last action item, Mr. Sang is requesting approval from the Board for the MOU between the Allentown School District and the Federation of Professional, Security Professionals of America, Allentown School District Secretarial Educational Support Personnel Association, and Program Participant.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Burks and School Board. As Ms. Matheson stated, this is a memorandum to get approval for four different MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding. It's with three of our employee groups, and then the fourth MOU would be for the individual participant. This initiative with Hampton University Online will help support the Allentown School District in growing our own future leaders and professionals across a variety of roles. By investing in the continued education and development of our current employees, we will not only increase the number of qualified staff in key non-teaching positions, but also strengthen employee engagement. This commitment to internal growth fosters a culture of opportunity and advancement, which in turn enhances retention by encouraging talented individuals to build long-term careers within the district. We do also want to shout out Michelle Soto, who is a graduate of Hampton University Online. She has now advanced and is a teacher at Building 21, based on the credentials she earned through Hampton.
Can you share what her previous role was?
She was a security officer previously.
Is there any comment or question about that item?
That's so cool. I know, I know when she started in Building 21, now it's going to be Bridgeview. Oh my God, that is so cool.
Yeah, we're very, we're very excited.
There you go.
Yes! And she is, and it's the wonderful part, is she's a cancer survivor. She is. And she did her time, and everything, they're not our school district, so. Our school district is wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other comment or question? May I have a motion to move this item forward?
I make that motion.
Second.
And we have a maker and a seconder. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then that motion also carries forward. Do we have any comment cards? Is there any old business to come before this committee? Any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn the building committee?
I make that motion.
Second.
Quick question here, Ms. Ramos. My list doesn't include the building committee, should it, what order should it be in?
Finance, Policy, Education, Building.
Okay, thank you. So, Policy?
Are we adjourned?
Yeah. I thought, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I did adjourn. All in favor of adjourning and moving to the next item?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the Policy Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, July 24, 2025. Do we have any public comments? Okay. All right. We have two policies to present this evening. Dr. Savoy will present both policies for their first readings, their Policy 815.1 on Artificial Intelligence, and Policy 819 on Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response.
Thank you. Good evening. I have Dr. Lourdes Sanchez, who's going to support me with the Policy 819, Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response. The first policy is Policy 815.1, which is the use of artificial intelligence in education. The Board previously approved this AI policy a few months ago. We had to revise it so that we are compliant with federal regulations. There are a few items that I wanted to point out. On page four of the policy, a statement was moved to this area for AI-generated content verification. It was previously in the policy, but it was placed somewhere else, page four. Right there. AI-generated content verification. Individuals using generative AI tools and resources have a responsibility to apply proper oversight and evaluation of generated information. Generative AI tools shall not be the sole determining factor used to make decisions related to student learning, assessment, academic integrity, or conduct. We emphasize that it shall not be the sole determining factor. On page five, we added the issues identified during the evaluation and monitoring process shall be reported to the district's Innovation Task Force. That was added. Scroll down a little bit more, please, on page five. AI use of operations. It's the second paragraph. This was revised and added, well, revised, I'm sorry. While AI tools may be used to assist in HR processes, which is human resources processes, so long as the protocols above are in place, the Board directs the final decision-making regarding employee evaluations, promotions, and hiring be human decisions and not solely by AI technology to ensure fairness, compliance, and compliance with anti-discrimination law.
Okay.
Those were the revisions made to the policy.
Is there a motion to move this policy forward to the regular board meeting?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? I do have a discussion point for this policy. The original draft that we had passed, it contained two instances of the use of the word equitable in access to generative AI that are no longer present in this draft. While I still believe it's a strong policy, it is my belief that policy is the environment that we all live in, and if we want to be an equitable district, I personally favor, for moral reasons only, that it continue to contain those words.
Is there a reason why the words were, that was taken out?
My belief is that it would be more friendly to avoiding AI word tracking for keywords from the federal government, to avoid attracting their ire.
So, in your recommendation, the word equitable, is that, that's the term you want to use, or access, or is there?
I believe in both instances, it was used as an adjective to describe access, equitable access. But starting with this policy, two uses of the word removed, not sure how many more will remove from other policies. But, having a motion in a second, all in favor, please, let me know by saying aye.
Wait, we're still, still got.
Oh, more discussion items? Okay, go ahead.
I'm still discussing. I understand you with that, because it looks like a slippery hill. As the Board members here, are you okay with that not being there, equitable?
In this draft, they're already removed.
It's already removed.
The one that we approved in December contained that language.
I know it's, you know, it's a political climate right now.
We have to go with this version.
But there are things that are bigger than that, and that's for students. I know I'm only here till this, till November, and y'all have to deal with this afterwards, but I'd like the equitable to be back. I don't know how everyone else feels, but I'm going to stand with Nick on this one. So I'm going to take my motion back.
I feel the same way you guys feel, as long as it doesn't put us in any sticky situations with all this political, federal stuff going on. So I agree with you guys, it's definitely just a hard decision regarding the political climate right now.
Mr. Saltick, what do you think?
This is less of a legal question, and more of, as indicated by your Policy Committee Chair, a quote-unquote moral question. I am probably going to venture to say, regardless of what wording you put in your policy, the behaviors of this district will still remain the same. This may be more of a surface issue than anything else, but we work in a world of symbolism and actions, and I believe that Mr. Nikolov aptly indicated that the reason why the language was, you know, the rationale for why the language was changed, but I don't believe for a minute that you're for why the language was changed, but I don't believe for a minute that your district's focus on equitable actions would change regardless of the way this policy reads. And the question is whether or not you want to be subject to the vagaries of an AI-based sweep of our policies. That's the issue. But I don't view this as a legal issue as much as a moral issue, and I'm going to give you some legal advice. You don't go to a lawyer for moral advice.
I'm still with you, Nick. I'm still with you with that.
You've withdrawn your motion?
No, I'm withdrawing my motion.
So you need a new maker?
If we're to move that on.
A seconder.
I'll be willing to make the motion.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we capture exactly where you're suggesting, that the team knows where we want it.
In the draft from December that we'd approved, there are two instances that contained the phrase equitable access in the use of generative AI. One, I believe, was on page four, I think.
The Chair may just address Dr. Savoy. Do you know exactly where?
No, I don't know.
Okay. You know where it is, Mr.
Give me a moment.
Okay.
I can find it. I don't have it printed out. On page three, where it says to ensure access, it used to be to ensure equitable access. And then on page six, under Professional Development, same thing, equitable access to generative AI.
Do we have action? I'm not sure.
The motion didn't pass.
Okay.
We'll hold off on this one, I guess. Make some edits.
Are you suggesting that we bring it back, or you want to address it now?
If the board is comfortable addressing it now and changing the language, we can make an amendment and then move that one to the regular board meeting.
Okay. And do you...
They need a motion to do that, I think.
I'll make a motion to amend it to contain its previous language with the two uses of equitable.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move that forward. All right, next up, we have Policy 819. This is Suicide Awareness Prevention and Response.
Thank you.
The policy 819 has extensive additions to the policy so that we are compliant with state and federal regulations regarding suicide awareness and prevention. Dr. Lourdes Sanchez is the Chair of the District Psychological Services Department and will review the policy and respond to any inquiries.
Thank you, Dr. Savoy. Good evening.
Good evening.
The language throughout the policy has been updated to reflect research-based practices, providing additional clarity on implementation procedures. The revisions also address the correlation between threat assessment teams and crisis response and intervention teams, reflecting more current terminology and resources. The district's purpose statement has been revised to align with the board's responsibilities in providing a comprehensive program that promotes school connectedness and behavioral health in accordance with law. The definition section has been significantly expanded and revised to promote consistency in understanding the terminology used throughout the policy. Language outlining specific warning signs and suicide risk factors has been removed as this information and language would be more appropriately be included in administrative regulations or internal training materials. The language regarding suicide awareness and prevention education for both students and staff has been updated to better clarify how this education will be administered in accordance with school code. Additionally recommended strategies for delivering lessons on student suicide awareness and prevention based on research-based practices have been included. In the Methods of Prevention section, language has been added to clarify that suicide prevention efforts will be integrated with community-based support systems. Under Referral Procedures, language has been revised to specify that students exhibiting suicide risk factors or behaviors indicative of a threat to their safety should be promptly referred to the appropriate team or staff member and supervised to ensure their safety. Additional recommended language has been included to direct staff to report students showing signs of risk to the threat assessment team or the designated suicide prevention coordinator to facilitate assessment and intervention processes. A new Safe to Say Something section has been added to address reports received through the Safe to Say Program addressed in Policy 805. The district's existing language on methods of intervention has been replaced with recommended procedures for assessment and intervention taken from PSBA's Policy Guide. This is more clearly addressed, this more clearly addresses the steps to be taken when evaluating students at risk. The district's procedural language is better suited for inclusion in administrative regulations supplemental to the policy. Language has been added to recommend establishing administrative regulations and procedures to promote collaboration between the threat assessment team and the crisis response intervention team. Additional language has been incorporated to emphasize the importance of collaboratively developing appropriate student safety plans as part of student assessment and intervention efforts. The district's current Methods of Response language have been replaced with procedures from PSBA's Policy Guide as a recommendation, providing clearer guidance on methods of responding to threats and suicide attempts. These Methods of Response are more procedural and better suited as an administrative regulation supplement to the policy. Recommended language regarding confidentiality of reports and information has been added, ensuring compliance with federal law and regulations. Finally, the list of resources has been updated and recognized, reorganized, to include additional contact information related to suicide awareness, prevention, and crisis response for better structure.
May I make a, have a motion to move this to our regular board meeting?
I make that motion.
A second.
Have a maker and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. I'd like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole meeting for the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, July 24, 2025. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is now at the beginning of the meeting, and is limited to agenda items only. Do we have any cards? Okay. Madam Superintendent, do you have anything to add for this agenda?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Matheson. Tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. One is to include the Mobile Vision Program with our great partners, the Valley Health Partners, so we want to thank them for their continual partnership, our Student Code of Conduct, and additional resources for K-5 to math students, K to 5 math students, due to increased enrollment trends. And then we also have on tonight a great partnership, and I think Mr. Yurcheck is going to talk about that. That superintendent is over the moon on this one, about the Juilliard School, Performing Arts School. And so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Tonight, we have six agenda items. The first four items are being presented by Dr. Savoy without board objection. We'll take all four of them together to determine whether they move forward. Please tell us about them.
Good evening again. The first one is, the first item on the agenda is the approval, request for approval for the Memorandum of Understanding with the Valley Health Partners Community Vision Center to facilitate the provision of vision examinations and related vision services for students in the district via the Mobile Vision Program. This is a continuation of our agreement from this past year, and it also allows us to have more than one location and one site for the services.
Is there any comment or question about that? Next?
The next agenda item is a request for board's approval, the board's approval for the up-the-proposed Allentown School District Digital Learning Program encompassing K through 12 virtual learning opportunities for students in full-time, hybrid, and credit recovery models at the cost not to exceed $316,600. The virtual campus will be a full-time, is a full-time online learning program for students in kindergarten through 12. The hybrid component of this program is for students in grades 6 through 12 who need additional support to be successful in virtual learning. And the third part of the program is for credit recovery, to offer credit recovery courses for students in grades 9 through 12. This, so this last year, we had Edgenuity, and we went to Pearson Learning for 9 through 12, and we had Imagine Learning for K through, I'm sorry, 6 through 12, and we had Imagine Learning this encompass all grades. So we will have one learning platform.
Any comment or question? We can take the next one.
The next item is the annual approval of our Code of Conduct for the 25-26 school year. We made a few revisions as it relates to an updated letter from the superintendent and board president. We updated the School Board of Directors. We updated Title IX. We updated the name to, of Building 21, to its new name, Bridgeview Academy. We changed some fonts and colors in the document. We updated contacts, and we changed one title for Community Support. We added additional policies, and we included the artificial intelligence policy. The rest are more formatting revisions that we're making.
Any comment or question? May I have a motion to move these four items forward?
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item for board approval is the Memorandum of Understanding between Project Aware and the Allentown School District to accept the Data Aware funding, which will support the development of data-informed processes for school-based counseling program pending the district's solicitor improvement. We received 70, the social workers and psychologists received $70,000 through Project Aware, so this is an opportunity for them to gather data on the services that they're providing in one platform. And you can see, it also provides training for the staff, and they're getting training in social emotional strategies, activity tools, and we need storage units for our other activities that we have going on with the social workers.
Any comment or question? May I have a motion for this item?
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. I didn't mean to split those, but...
Thank you.
We have a math curriculum item. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Dr. Burks. Good evening, School Board of Directors. As you know, our enrollment has increased, and so this is our core program for math, our core resource at elementary math level. However, we do need some more student additions, so all students have a workbook in front of them. So this request is to approve mathematic materials from Sabus at the cost of 600, or I'm sorry, $67,744.16.
Question or comment? May I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a motion for the Juilliard School Partnership? Mr. Yurcheck?
Good evening, everyone, School Board of Directors, Dr. Burks. We'd like to request the board's approval to partner with the Juilliard School from August 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028, in providing professional learning for educators, mentor and industry professional visits, instructional strategy and systems design consulting. What this consists of are comprehensive professional development opportunities for our teachers. So Juilliard will provide training for both performing arts and non-art's educators aligned with our academic and artistic goals. In-person workshops, so hands-on workshops, they will come to us, and being that we're in close proximity, it makes it pretty easy for them to come and provide training for our staff and students. Virtual coaching and mentorship, so monthly virtual, or monthly, monthly virtual sessions with staff. Juilliard Creative Classroom Access, so they have a full curriculum, call it a curriculum, a bunch of plans that are accessible online that we have, we will have access to, to incorporate into our curriculum. The support for non-art's educators, so we were, we had an opportunity to experience a workshop, and immediately, my first thought was, this would be great for everyone. And that is something that they actually do. They provide training for non-art's educators just on how to spark creativity and different strategies within the classroom. How does this impact our students? Through a comprehensive suite of services and support, Juilliard will collaborate with the Allentown School District to elevate the role of music, dance, and drama in our schools while also reinforcing broader academic and wellness goals. This initiative directly supports our district's vision for whole child development, interdisciplinary learning, future-ready graduates, and theme-based schools. By building teacher capacity and inspiring students through direct engagement with professional artists, the partnership lays a foundation for system-wide impact. Students will be provided access to world-class art, arts education. Most of us have probably heard of the Juilliard School, and when we think of that, we think of the best of the best. So this will enrich their academic experience through creativity, exploration, and artistic expression. Students across all grade levels will benefit from the inspiring encounters with professional artists, hands-on mentorship opportunities, as I mentioned, and expanded curriculum offerings that support the development in those three content areas, music, drama, and dance. High school students will also have access, the opportunity to enroll in advanced Juilliard-led courses, preparing them for college career pathways in the arts.
Okay, so this is Juilliard, Juilliard, New York City.
Lee Juilliard.
We talking fame from when I was younger, and everybody wanted, wanted to go to that school at fame. We talking Debbie Allen. We talking real real. We talking real thing.
Everyone, everyone who's gone to Juilliard, that's the Juilliard.
Who found this program?
Sorry?
Who found this?
I was going to say, there was, Dr. Burks can speak to that a little bit more about how it came to be, but...
We, so as part of our partnership with the Digital Promise and our membership with the League of Innovative Schools, we visited the Juilliard School at Lincoln Center about two years ago, and so we met the executives from Juilliard, and at that time, Ms. Brown Noel and Ms. Conover were with me, and so we began to, we said that we want to partner with them, and so, as you know, things take a little bit of time, so we're able to now broker this partnership with Juilliard for the benefit of our students. And although they work with two school districts around the country, but this project is unique in its kind, the level of intentionality that they are working with the school district. So we're happy, our friends in Compton, they have a relationship, but not to the extent that we are engaging in with Juilliard. So, and I will be remiss if I did not commend our team, Mr. Yurcheck, and our School Board Directors, Mr. Bursell, and Ms. Brown Noel in assisting with this, as well as our school leaders, and I don't want to miss any names, so I'm going to say, though, we had, I'll say the school principals because I remember who went on that trip with us, but Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Telsa Sparks, yeah, from Ramo School, and we had other teacher leaders who were with us, and so we began to have those conversations, had an opportunity to experience some of the learning there. And so I'm really thrilled about this partnership, and because of their commitment to Digital Promise and the League of Innovative Schools, they were quite interested in Allentown. And so, and so we have to thank our friends with Digital Promise and the League of Innovative Schools for their support with this. Schools for their support with this.
Okay. So that means we got Juilliard Juilliard, New York City Juilliard. Our superintendent and everyone else brought it to us. We gonna do it. And we got people complaining about where she lives? Shut up! Shut up! I don't want to hear, if I read another word, I'm coming for you, because I only got three more, three, four more months, so. No superintendent's ever done this. Ever, 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 ever. And this is amazing! So, I thank everyone that was on that team. Thank you.
Our team. So, I just want to say there's more to come in the development of this partnership, and we want to thank our friends at Juilliard, because they were just as committed to seeing Allentown be a partner as we were enthusiastic about this experience for our students. And so we don't have all the details, so I'm just preempting any reporters coming to me, because we have to work out some of the logistics of this before we can say exactly what the entire project looks like. So, but thank you so much, Mr. Yurczek, for your hard work in this.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to move this?
I make that motion.
I thought you might. And one of you did second it? Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's moving forward. Do we have any comment cards for non-agenda items? Is there any old business to come before this committee?
Yes. Again, for those people who keep attacking our superintendent and our decisions as a board, stop it, because this has never happened before, and we're going to continue doing more and more and more. This board even is going to continue to give our children something they've never had before in an equal foot in the 21st century. Thank you.
Is there any new business? May I have a motion to adjourn the education committee?
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Building is next.
I'd like to call to order the building committee of the whole meeting of the board of directors of the school district for the city of Allentown for today, July 24th, 2025. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on any agenda item and non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is the beginning of the meeting and limit to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not receive any card, public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our board's policy, any person may address the board with accordance with the procedures and limitations of the policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered or on other matters affecting the administration, management, and operation of this district. Remarks of personal manner, remarks of personal manner directed against any individual will be ruled out of order. Do we have any comment cards?
No.
All right. Did you want anything to say?
No, thank you.
Tonight we have one action item. Dr. Whartonby is requesting approval from the School Board of Directors for KCBA Architects with by professional architectural and engineering service for the future program of the newly named, newly named Brigadier Academy of Health, Science, Innovation, and Technology.
Thank you very much again. So as Ms. Harris just said, I'm looking for the board to approve KCBA Architects for working on the new Bridgeview Academy School. And the idea is, how we did, came about this, while we don't have a design for the school, we wanted to pre-qualify architects. With that said, we went out to approximately eighteen architectural firms, of which five submitted proposals. Then we interviewed three of them that had comp, that had experience in school construction. That's what we were doing here, and KCBA wound up being the firm that the committee selected, and we're bringing them to you. So as of right now, it is a firm that we'd like to bring in. From that, we're going to be working with Mr. Sultanic to develop the contract, and then also with Dr. Burks developing the program for the new 21st Century School, but we wanted to bring an architect on board first. And this also follows the mandate from Dr. Burks as well as the board to broaden our, broaden our portfolio of professional services. So now we have a whole bunch of really great architects and engineers who are investing their time, their experience, their capital into the Allentown School District, and I welcome them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, this is action item, need to bring up before the board. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Can I make a second?
Second.
All righty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any cards for non-agenda items? Yeah. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? I do with, of course I do, but it's not bad, it's really good. Because building is also under athletics, athletics. We have a young man who, who just graduated from Allen, who had a 5.0, grade point average, also graduated from L3C, so he has associate's degree. His name is Darrell Holden. He is going to Albright College, but he's also being, considered to be voted for Young Athletic, Sports Illustrated Young Athletic, Athlete. So I'm going to be giving that to Dr. Burks and Ms. Melissa Reese to put that on our website so we can vote for him. That's amazing, from Allentown. And he's not just athletic, he's smart too. So yeah, we, we doing things over here. All right, may I have a motion to dismiss?
Make that motion?
Have a second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it?
Which means we're ready to move forward to the regular board meeting, because we're moving rather quickly tonight. I'm not going to declare a break. We're going straight on. So I would like to call to order the meeting of the board of directors for the school district for the city of Allentown for today, July 24th, 2025. Do we have any public comment cards? We have none? We will now have roll call. Mr. Simonson, will you please do that?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Brown. Ms. Conover. Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Matheson.
Here.
Mr. Nikolov.
Here.
Ms. Noel. Ms. Hartnett.
Here.
Ms. Sierra.
Here.
Mr. Bursio.
Here.
We have five board members present and one virtual.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Superintendent, do you have some other things you would like to say?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just, again, really thrilled about the partnership with Juilliard. I just think how, how more innovative we can become and enhance our professional learning and services to our students, so I'm just really happy that we're able to move, everyone knows I use this little metaphor, moving things from hot dogs to lobster for our kids. So I'm really excited about that. I also, I would be remiss, we do have seven of our staff members participating in a Google certification program, and so we're excited about we are able to strengthen our partnership with Google. So we want to thank them, and we're looking forward to them coming back to district and help to innovate and execute on using more AI tools to support and personalize learning for our students. And I want to thank you, Mr. Delphine, and we have Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Weiss leading that work for us, so thank you so much. So let's please give those editor teachers, so it's not just administration, but we have teacher leaders now studying over in, in Chicago, studying, going more in-depth about, learning about Google tools and AI and all those things, so they can help embed that work within our district, so please give them a round of applause.
We have no public comment cards at the moment, so may I have a motion for the approval of the minutes? We need a maker and a seconder?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a maker and a seconder. Mr. Simonson, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Bursio? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
6-0, I'm sorry.
Information updates this evening. Mr. Nikolov, is there any report from the Allentown Human Relations Committee?
There is. As of a few weeks ago, the current Human Relations Commission has been disbanded with the passing of a new Human Relations ordinance. As of right now, the one that they passed has no language that affords for a school district representative on that commission. So until the city council makes an amendment in that regard, we have no guarantee of any representation there.
What a shame.
Interesting.
That's it.
All right. Ms. Harris, Mr. Bursio, is there a report for the public library?
Yes. Just want to let you know that the library does have every month resume writing with PA Career Link, that's usually the last of the month, and Chess Club has also been meeting with us. We've had many things happening during the summer. We had Make Your Own Viewfinder for teens, we had the Lehigh Valley Zoo, the Trump Day for the, for the library, we have the Art of Steam, as well as Make Your Own, I'm sorry, Read About Therapy Dogs, Mixing Matters with the Division Center, or Art Story, Art Story. I'm sorry, I also have my glasses with me, so it's, and Shakespeare for Kids, and we had a summer reading club, which did really well, as long, as well as that, that goes until August 2nd. We have free lunches that are available at the library from, for our, for our youth from June 23rd to August 1st. Lunches are served Monday through Friday at 12:30, from 12:30 to 1:00 PM in the community room. And we are, we were, we're doing okay at the library. We do have some, you know, issues to work out with the book, with the board, but other than that, it has been, it's, the library has been doing well.
Anything to add?
No.
Okay. Is there anything from the Allentown Recreation Commission? Ms. Sierra, Mr. Bursio?
So there's no updates at this time. Our next meeting will be in September.
There's nothing from the foundation this evening? Or from the intermediate unit? The LCTI will meet next month, it doesn't meet in July? So those are our updates. Move to the board of directors' report. May I have a motion for the approval of the board of directors' report?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll, Mr. Simonson.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Bursio?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
May I have a motion for the approval of the policy agenda?
Make that motion?
A second?
There's a second. Is there any discussion? May I point out that the one item will be as amended this evening, earlier this evening? Please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
May I have a motion for the approval of the secretary and treasurer's report?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion on them? Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
May I have a motion for the approval of the superintendent's report?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Hartnett? Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
May I have a motion for the approval of the personnel report?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
We would like to have Mr. Sang come forward and introduce some people to us.
It's, it's not Mr. Sang, it's Mr. James, and I'm so excited and I'm very proud to be the very first, my first introduction of our new personnel to Allentown School District. We're very excited. Let's get excited, everyone, get excited about our new team. So good evening, Superintendent Dr. Burks, and to our School Board Directors. Thank you so much for your approval of the personnel agenda this evening. We will now continue our tradition of introducing the administrators who were just approved and who are present with us this evening. I will introduce them in the order that they appear in the personnel agenda, and those administrators will be greeted by our school board, our superintendent, CEO, and extended cabinet members. Let's get excited! First, we have Dr. Katima Kirksey, who is the Director of Family and Community Engagement. Dr. Ajat Mehta, Executive Director, Research Assessment and Accountability. We have Ms. Stephanie Williams, who is the Principal of Harrison Morton Middle School. We have Dr. Alicia Knopf, who is the Acting Principal of Allen High School. And we have Ms. Diane Jensen, who is the Acting Director of English Learners. Let's give a round of applause for all of our new personnel joining us, and they will stay with us in Allentown School District.
May I have a motion for the approval of the building report?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
We have a maker and a seconder, is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Ms. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Motion passes 6-0.
May I have a motion for the approval of the finance report?
I'll make that motion?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Bursio?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Nikolov?
Yes.
Ms. Hartnett?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Do we have any comment cards on non-agenda items? Is there any old business to come before us this evening? Any new business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just want to piggyback off of what Ms. Harris was saying earlier. This nonsense with the comments going on about Dr. Burks on Facebook and social media, it has to stop. And just because people don't agree with how we vote or the decisions we make, you don't get to question our integrity as a board, because we all care about this district. We all care about the families and the students and the staff, everybody. We all care about them, and we make the decisions from our heart and what we feel is best. This nonsense going on online, it has to stop, because it's not productive in educating our kids, when that's what we're in the business of doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Quit playing. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.